We'll forget you're on camera.
Well, you know, long word. One, two.
Did you give my idea of this, uh, can you reply? I didn't see it. I was, uh, just sort of, you got, that's all I need.
Yeah.
And then make sure when we do start, everybody put their microphones on and speak over the microphone. So.
The regular meeting of the City of Elway Board of Zoning Appeals for Thursday, August seventh, twenty twenty five. We'll have kind of a order. First of all, we'll have their roll call. For me.
Deborah Sears.
Here.
Bob French.
Here.
Roger Towner.
Here.
Greg Casada.
Here.
Mark Worsley.
Here.
Lisa Hobbs, Building Commissioner.
Here.
Jeff Graham, City Attorney.
Here.
Amy Smith, Secretary.
Okay. Okay, I, has everybody left at their minutes from the last meeting, which is March sixth? Everybody gave a good look over? Do you have any problems with it?
No.
Do we need to have a, um, motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All second.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye.
So today we have a new business. Nick Walker is seeking approval for a variance to operate a business in a residential area. The address is eighteen oh nine North C Street. It's in our zones, R one zoning area. This business is op, is to operate coatings such as ceraco, duraco, anodizing, staining, and gunsmithing. And now I will, um, open up a public hearing.
Entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion to open up a public hearing here.
Make a motion that we open up the meeting for the public hearing.
Sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Walker is here. And can you step up to the microphone and tell us your name and your address?
Hello, Nick Walker, eighteen oh nine North C Street.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Walker?
Yeah, um, yes, I had a, just a couple of questions. So with the cer, cerac coating, how much are you planning on doing of that as far as volume wise? Is that, I know I saw, seen a picture of that bottle, pretty small. So is that typical amount you plan on taking on hand?
Yeah, they, they sell them in large quantities, but typically like, uh, like coat, uh, making a four or five ounce or something. And I think it generally takes about thirty, forty milliliters.
Okay.
And I have a lot there, it's only a hundred and twenty-five. So it's eighteen one, it's three part, uh, uh, ceramic, uh, powder.
Mm-hmm.
So there's every eighteen parts of the, uh, product, there's one part of the heart.
Gotcha. So it's not a large volume?
Yeah, we're literally talking, you know, eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, okay. That was one of the things I was just curious about is how much is being stored? Cause I know some of that stuff is, uh, you know, you have to keep it stored in cool places.
Right.
You know, uh, next to open flames or sparks or anything like that.
Right, well, and I think so with ceraco, they do, you know, legally have to say that it is playable because of the, you know, like, you know, like, you, you're, uh,
Correct.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, you're gonna agree, so, you know, it's.
Yeah, it's just the ventilation and stuff, I think, is a greater inhalation hazard, but, uh.
Yeah.
Do you live over the far end of the house?
Yeah, yeah.
Are any of these, so are any of these chemicals you use considered hazardous? Should they be kept away from other chemicals? Or what is it, the acetylene mixture of the go?
No, so this is, uh, it's, this is based on, um, you know, I mean, they're really allowing basically any, um, you know, like plastics, metals, and then those, uh, things like that. I think it's just that, so when I, uh, park, uh, in this illusion with, uh, the current, uh, I'm saying, I say, I want to, uh, uh.
So, so in your estimation, nothing hazardous, are few and wise when you're working?
No, no, not as little as I'm working with. Um, you know, for myself, I, I, I'm a respirator and stuff, obviously, you shouldn't, you know, bring anything, but as far as like.
Is it something, did they have a number, is it something maybe we're gonna complain about, you know, they smell you going, that kind of thing?
No, I wouldn't think so, like, it's gonna be such a small amount, because I'm not just starting that too, so I just graduated from college, so I don't think, uh, but that's kind of, it's gonna be deciding part of the, I suppose, the main aspect, which is gonna be for, uh, like, our parts to make that nature, because I was gonna make that some whole series, and, you know, there's things that I'm, I'm gonna need to give it to ours, my own, to, to, eventually, but, um, you know, it's hard to get that, uh, I don't think that nature.
My, my question, what's, what's the disposal requirements if you have, once it's been used, will it be used again, or is it?
It can be used again, or re-stored, um, typically, it's mixed use, so it's based on, uh, whatever side value is, like, if it's one five, like, it's twenty-five milliliter, there probably be a drop, whatever.
If, if, if it comes to the place where you have, do have to dispose of something that's already mixed, is there disposal requirements? And we don't want to dump down the drain, or?
No, yeah, so I can have it, it's a good one, just dump down the drain, so what, what typically do you do with it? As soon as it's, as soon as it's small now, you can just let it dry out, and then the hard, the hard, uh, you know, that thing, whatever.
If you have to stop over, not, you know, will that work, you mean, just solid?
Right, yeah, and then it just leaves a solid, and then anything like, probably were to take all the hard order, and it were to be, uh, add a order, and add a lot, like, since it acts ceraco, or I can be able to, like, fluid with it, and then cerco, something, you know, that out with, with, I mean, realistically, like, it's easier to, yeah.
This would be a question for Lisa, is this something we want to revisit down the road, just to make sure everything's good and kosher, and?
We all.
Typically something we want to do, because it is new to all of us.
It's new to me as well, so, I mean, I, I know I thought I was going to just go for it right now to do the same thing, um, very new to me as well.
I would say if somebody complained about it, for somebody.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
You could have done this in your garage and nobody would ever know it.
Right, right.
So are you gonna put a sign out or something like that? Uh, is this, the other question I have is, are you doing most of this by mail? If I send you a gun barrel, you're gonna, you're gonna, uh, coat this barrel for me, basically, what you're doing?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not really planning on having an outdoor front or anything, I'd probably have you next to live around, you know, all kinds of.
So this will be little or no traffic coming in now, right?
Right, yeah.
There might be days when nobody ever stops by it.
Right, right, yeah.
Cause a lot of it's gonna be UPS or FedEx or something like that.
Yeah.
So you're, you are about, gonna put up a sign out, or?
I, I mean, I might, uh, I'd probably do something small, almost like a yard, so it's like the zoning sign or something, you know, something in that nature, just in case, because I know a lot of people are under hunting, you know, either camo and stuff, that, uh, you know, like I said, that's, I mean, the fire respect is really, I just need a business entity to be able to easily approval, get that, uh, so really, it's like, less out fires, more just getting like hard parts, it's really anything, so you have, uh.
You think it's like a ceramic coating, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, so I can do like rims, um, you know, headers, things that nature, it's.
Yeah, yeah. So you're just using small marks, cause you're only doing a gun barrel, putting an armor aggro, how do you apply that anyway?
Uh, airbrush, airbrush, and.
The gun.
An airbrush?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Any employees?
No, good evening.
I don't mean to be the, I did enough cold water on this, and I, I certainly don't get a vote, but you're, for use, this is a use variance, you're, you're asking for, I'm talking to the board, not you, I, I'm impressed with what you're doing. The, uh, you have a hard, you must find that there's an extreme hardship that re, that, uh, results, would result with failure to grant the request of variance. And you, and you, the code says that mere economic or financial hardship alone is not exceptional, with inconvenience, aesthetic considerations, physical handicaps, preferences, for neighbors likewise not as well qualifies as exceptional hardship. This is a pretty densely residential area, is not, would that be fair to say?
Yeah.
I, I, I'd look at it on that before I came, but it appears to be pretty, pretty dense. You do have a home occupation, uh, uh, provision in your code that fits a lot better for him. Um, and what that does, it, it, rather than get into a use variance, which you're, you're allowing this kind of business in that parcel, now you can put restrictions, you mentioned the, the, uh, the ability to go back and have regular checkup, which you can do, you can have reasonable, uh, conditions as part of any variance. Um, I think is, or it fits the code, it's usually your home occupation, it limits it to you or a member of your family, or you're allowed to have one employee that's not a member of your family. Um, and then when, when you leave, or you, this business turns into a big deal, and you sell your house, that, that, then it would go away as you left. As a use variance, once you have that there, as long as it's, as long as the property's continued to be used in the same way, it never goes away, and that, and then, part of what this board has to do is, not with what you're going to do when it makes these decisions, it has to look twenty years down the road, and everybody wants to give you what you want. But the, uh, my recommendation is that this be tabled, and we come back on, on a home occupation business, and he says the same thing, it's the same one I said last month, and we vote on that. Fits a lot better under the law. You're, you're not, frankly, um, it does not.
No, that's a special exception to say the variance.
Yeah, and it's, um, so, I mean, I don't get to vote, it's you guys and, and that.
So, so the notifications, we're having to go back now to everybody within the three hundred foot radius.
That's why I did it. I mean, you pay three hundred dollars.
How, how much did you, well?
Three hundred dollars, it was a lot.
I don't see why you have to send out notices in here, it's just the same, it's, you're gonna notice, it's gonna be the same, you're gonna treat it whole lot of place.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak on it?
Any notices you sent out, remember? You ever, have any notices were sent out?
Well, ten dollars each, pretty much.
It was, uh.
Thirty?
It was a lot of that, yeah.
You got to the point, is there anyone here to speak for or against?
I don't think you should have to send out notices again, not for a little business like that.
I, is there a way that I just send out, let one change the authority?
Yeah, and I can be regular there.
And I can send it out to, to say this.
If you come out from the city, to send a little one in the newspaper.
I will leave that, I, I think that would.
It protects you, because if it's not done exactly by this, and someone comes in later, it's a blatant false rules, and it's not these five people sitting here, it could get you.
Yeah, well, that was, that's kind of, you know, a lot of my, we don't agree, it's kind of, I'm just gonna be, I mean, yeah, and pretty, I have their agency, so.
So.
So you want it done correctly.
Yeah, so would I need a board approval to, to?
Board authorize you to, to have notices described, which will be regular mail coming from the Office of the Building Commissioner, and then we'll, we'll have to hear, and the newspaper notice, and the other colleague here, and then we'll have to rehear it based on the home occupation's hand, which he, he nails that, um, to a T.
I guess we never did that, dealt with that before, so that's why we didn't.
I never.
Oh, I see, it's, I, it's, I'm not, nobody's fault, you're, um, I should have thought of it earlier.
But it's gonna be a special exception there, instead of a variance.
Jeff, you're saying variance is a lot more.
This, this board can do it, what I'm saying is.
Then I think I'll do it.
Okay, well, it doesn't meet the standard of the code, it's not a hardship.
It's, why would, what kind of hardship you would ask for?
A hardship for a use has to be something that the property can't be used for anything else but what he wants to use it for. Well, he's, he lives there, so it can be used for something else. But a home occupation is what he's doing, and that, that, that just fits our code. Now, listen, Bill, this is the lawyer.
We've been through it before several times.
I believe that.
Well. I just, I just think the gentleman is, is low profile, not gonna do very much out of his house or garage. He went to all the hoops, notified all the people, we can come back and check and see how it's working. I, I just, I just feel like, you know, I'll be, I'll go ahead and have variance, that's what I figured. I am the queen director for the City of Elway, thank you.
Nick, are you ready for your other, everything else is in line, or do you still have some work to do?
Um, I mean, it really is the great, it's our current thing is last month, and, but, yeah, uh.
What you could do is you can give them contingent approvals tonight, reviewable in thirty days, and then do the home occupation, that, that lets him get caught up, review. If someone would challenge this variance, now I'm not saying it's gonna happen, there's nobody here, as you pointed out, um, loop loops.
Are you on a time schedule with your other, the other ATF? Okay, just wondered.
So do I have a direction to, to notify them?
Notify.
Notify the, the paper?
For a second time? I, I don't like it.
That, I think you're saying, so, wait, what, what I have set up now, it was pretty much, I have to live.
No, that's not what, uh, that you're not calling yet.
No, no, you can do it the same place, it's called a home occupation. Do exactly what you're doing, or, nobody in this room is trying to tell you you can't do what you're doing.
No, 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 no.
But you can do it right there.
I understand the difference.
We won't change it anymore.
We should have made a special exception on variance, that's all, that's what I think. Can I ask Jeff, can the, the city notify people, you give him contingent approval, we notify people and come back and address it next month?
So can we just take that to a vote?
That's, that's what I'm saying, I need you to write it upon this board.
To change it to, to me, you should have done it first.
Yeah, so, so they were competing approval, now, I mean, something he can move forward, and then it was known, it could, and then.
Well, okay, I'll entertain a motion, you wanna, uh, Lisa, to send out, uh, you, what, you have to put in the paper?
Yeah.
Yes, and then you have to send out, put in your notices.
You got, you got really two things you need to decide. One, are you gonna give him provisional approval tonight on the variance? If you do that, that lets you go for thirty days until he comes back, and then you make the lawyer have to get thirty days, he gets to continue to conduct business.
Yeah, because realistically, I still have quite a bit I've gotta do, so this was step one, because I could actually shut down the whole thing, whether I get approved or ATF. So step one's getting zoning approval, then I gotta get, you know, business name, I gotta get E I in through IRS, I can file through, uh, the ATF for my F M Ls, so there's still, you know, I mean, like I said, I can start doing hard parts and things right now, which is what I'm trying to get going now, uh, because it's still a process before I can get my, uh, this, you know, that stuff I'm in, you know, it'll be something a little different even.
What, what the board could do is grant approval of the variance tonight, review one at your next meeting, and then at your next meeting, um, authorize Lisa to send out the notices described, we'll have another hearing on home occupation, and then we'll flip the home occupation at the next meeting. You'll be compliant the whole time.
And I apologize, Nick, I just, we're all thirty, I guess.
We just wanted to make parts, I think that's what the board wants.
Right.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to let, grant him the variance for thirty days.
I'll make a motion to grant, I'll grant him a variance for thirty days.
And provide the notice, it isn't Lisa's, yes.
And a second?
Second.
Great, sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um.
I'm just hoping to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing, thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
And good luck. I guess we'll see you in a minute. Does he have to come back in thirty days, or do we just?
He doesn't have to, but there will be a.
Keep in touch with us, you got, I remember. Sounds good, thank you, Nick.
All right.
Thank you.
No, suggestion, you just want to vote the public hearing before you take a vote.
Oh, we are, I'm sorry.
So you took the vote before the public hearing, that's.
So we vote, please.
You need to vote again after the public hearing.
Okay, we'll take a re-vote since I screwed up. Okay, um, all in, oh, I need a motion to grant him the variance for thirty days. Anybody want to?
We need, we need a motion in there. Close first.
I did close it.
You did that once, you just, just need to do it again, she just.
She, as a preside officer, she can close it, and she, and she did. So we're, we're out of the public hearing, and if you'd like, Roger, you can just renew your previously made motion.
There's, there's all, all my motion, close the public hearing.
We do that too.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Roger, I'm gonna take your motion.
The, close the public, no, I'll make a motion that way, grant conditional, uh, approval for my, for the variance, and expect them to come back in thirty days to ask for, if we change to, uh, home, burdened.
Yeah, unoccupied. Okay.
Okay, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
For our apologies, I missed the wrong word.
I'm all, I'm all. Everything's cool. Okay, now, uh, wildfire assets is the next thing on the agenda. They are seeking approval for variances for the reduction of the minimum requirements of the R two zoning, to be able to replat the current lots, to place the structures on this property into their own parcels, to put them into compliance. The property is at nineteen thirty South K, and I will be opening a public hearing right now, so step to the microphone, please.
My name is Kathy, and I'm in Protection Leaks Trigger. I'm here tonight to, uh, help to zip this property. We do have two structures on one parcel, the north parcel, one of them was built nineteen oh seven, the other one was in nineteen seventy-seven. They have been improved and went in, and, uh, right now, what we're trying to do is attempt to, the lots currently run north to south with the garage seating on the standalone lot in the back, and we're going to be replating it and rebuilding it east to west, so that the north parcel will have the, um, house on the north with garage behind it, and in the south will have a side yard, or, but since it's on the corner of the, the rear. Um, we, like, we're, we're in the variance request, we have, we have the site, uh, issues, we have the car issues, the previous system situation, and the snowing, it's, it's other than the way we're asking to do variance. But at the end, as soon as we give the variance approval, we will be moving to the next meeting to get it, uh, to run the, uh, to get the lots east and west to try to get this fixed.
Are those structures occupied now?
They are currently occupied.
I, I see, well, you, you probably want to do this, so if everyone wants to sell, it'll get tired, and so you couldn't get tired, and so.
They're, 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 they need to get the fix, so they can, but with either title insurance or mortgage, because right now, the way it sits, we've got two structures on one, and then, uh, standalone garage, and we're definitely tired, we should, uh.
And, and of course, now that garage is still gonna be pretty close to the property line.
The, if, if on our drawing, you're gonna see a, on the west side, it says block, garage. We have, that is owned by someone else, and that is the entire neighborhood, and we're not, uh, clients. But the garage is on the outside of the subject property, it is on the, the north division. One, we have the right of variance to make repairs like this. Okay.
Then you don't, you, you're not, you're not planning on adding any structural or, you know, these properties? It's basically so you may market the property.
Be able to sell, market it more, which we live over.
I'll make a motion, I'll bring that, burn it for her.
You should ask if there's anybody here that's opposed, or, or, or.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions, or anybody here?
Your comments?
No, I'm just, I'm the, oh, we're.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, before I merge Roger, Roger, to grant that, will you close?
Take, take it again.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing now, thank you, that's a spin on, thank you. Okay, now, I'll entertain a motion to grant the variance.
Oh, I'm gonna go to grant the burns.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, Lisa's taken over, she's got a bunch of dates on these following properties on your pavement.
We want you to do, I want you to do a, a quick update of some of the properties. Uh, I believe Amy pops out some pictures. Uh, some of the properties, if you recall, we had, um, five forty fourth, Thirteenth Street in here. Uh, that was a property that was creating, uh, some issues, and they purchased it, and they were going basically nowhere on it, and we gave them some directive. So, I believe we gave them six months to have the roof on, put on that, clean up the property, this is the property down by you, Roger.
Yeah.
Five forty, right, right across the corner.
Oh, I'm looking at it, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they went, well, like a house apart for a while, all of a sudden they disappeared. Have you heard anything from them?
Um, he was in there, but he did do what, what we asked, we asked him to put a roof on, and we asked him to clean up the property. At, take the shingle, and he's done that, he's also removed the front porch.
Out of the windows, yeah.
He did a good job on the roof, too, but all the rest.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to give you an update on that one, that we'll finally get forward progress on that one. Twenty-three twelve South J. Uh, I believe he's got a picture, they, they attempted, and I use that loosely, um, they went up there and stripped the shingles off, and that's pretty much as far as they've gotten on that one.
How long have they stripped it off?
Mm-hmm, it's probably been six weeks, and it's not been put back on.
Is this a while longer, or do you?
That one I will be requesting them to be at the September meeting on, so we can have some direction to figure out what's going on, um.
Did we already talk about that one?
We did, we gave them six months as well.
Is that a local owner on this property?
Yes, yeah, it, it was, it was a young kid who came in and said that was his first home he purchased, and he was just wanting to work on it when he got the money, and one of the roofs was, the roof was the biggest issue.
The old roof, I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, so.
You want to call him back?
Uh, I'm bringing him back in September, so these, this is just informational purposes for you guys.
Okay.
Eight twenty-seven North Anderson Street, that's a big Victorian house, um, if you guys know where Sandy Rappel is. That has been purchased by a local guy, who is, um, due to the logistics of the current owner is making it a little difficult, because he's out of the country, so they're working, and it's taking longer to close than anticipated, but that will be a local gentleman who purchased that, and he plans on making that his, uh, home.
Have you talked to him?
The, they.
Have you made a talk with him?
Yes, yes.
He seems sincere, or whatever.
Tyler Hyatt is the gentleman who we done the call with here, who also done the old.
With the same people?
Yes.
Okay, but, and he, he wants to remodel that, not just rent, but to live in himself?
Yes, like, he want, his wife wants to make that his home, so, we're just waiting on all the closing and everything to get done and do to the logistics of the current owner, which I believe is in Japan. Things are going a little slower than what, what.
In the meantime, it's rotting.
Yeah.
We'll remove that one from our list, pretty much, we know Tyler's gonna do it.
Yeah, it's just informational purposes for you guys. Four seventeen South Twentieth, Twenty-first Street, I believe you all remember Mr. John Walden who come in?
Yeah.
Who had, to have his utilities turned on, currently there is no water there, but Mr. Walden is not residing at the home at this current time.
Is anybody?
And it has cleaned up a lot.
It doesn't look like the same place.
No, it's cleaned up a lot, so that's one that I will be keeping an eye on.
But nobody's living there.
I believe somebody may be living there, but I've not seen anybody there myself, I know that Mr. Walden is in the process of doing that this time.
Oh, is he?
Um, one twenty-two South Anderson Street, referred to as the corner bar. Uh, I just got off the phone with the current owner, and I should be receiving a purchase agreement with that one, uh, within the next three to four days, it has been purchased, the new owner has been made aware of all the issues. First, they will have to come in and, and deal with buttoning up properly until it is done.
Did you, you, you all listen so much to Biden, or?
Uh, my understanding, they brought several properties, um, in downtown Kokomo and other areas, and they are familiar with the extent of what needs to be done on it. So.
And there are apartments upstairs?
There are apartments, I think, there's five, five, five apartments.
There right now?
No, no, it, it's not livable. Um, fifteen thirty-four Main Street, that is, uh, formerly the Second Glance, um, store. We got in touch with, um, Ryan, Ryan did send a, um, his crew in, they did clean the building out, brought an officer in to clean the building out, got everything out of the windows, um, but this one here is, uh, right now in our court system, because I've asked for a structural review, I haven't yet received it, um, so he's been cited into our court for unsafe building, and I believe that he will be back in forty, thirty days, so I'll give you more information on that one as it's announced.
Has he had a court appearance yet, or do you, uh?
Huh?
Has he had a court appearance yet?
Well, he's had, yes.
Okay.
Uh, he received that healthy fine for the last time. Uh, the eighteen eleven South Anderson Street, known as the Brothers Auto, is also in our court system. Uh, was in two, three weeks ago, was given thirty days to reduce the number of parts on the lot, and to clean up the lot.
But it's not been the thirty days, I mean, I know, we're still looking, waiting, but.
Once, once we put them in court, we gotta let the court do their thing.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Um, so, um.
It was a fine, too, if they did, it was a fine.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a big.
Daily fine or weekly fine?
Yeah, well, I, I stopped there, did, looked around, nothing's changed, really.
No.
No, and.
But it hasn't been thirty days.
Right, right. And I did express to both the brothers, the judge wanted both the brothers to come in, and I expressed, I'll make a commitment that you can't hold on to, and so.
Again, what we need to be thinking of is how many vehicles are allowed on a car lot and a lot.
I, we have looked through states, uh, trying to come up with one. Uh, he's got seventy-five car lot on that lot, and he promised the court, but when he came back, he would have fifty to fifty-five. And it will, we, we go out there and record, and we have another car out there. They did, uh, purchase these property here now, um, and then when they came in, we said, no, that's residential area, you're not, you're not.
They're gonna try to bring more cars down.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna try to bring more.
And, and, and other locations, and we said no, so I did give them, um, sent them to a lot here in town, that, um, is a commercial lot, but I stressed to them quite a bit, didn't I, Bill? That if you do this, put a fence up, because people won't look at it.
Look at it, yeah.
It, when they purchased, come into the city, they said they wanted a car lot. Okay, that is not a car lot.
No, it's not.
That is an auto.
Scrap.
I think it's many watering.
It, it's a, it's a, it's a chop shop.
Yeah.
So, what, what they're doing is, all their vehicles are coming here, and they're working on them, and they've got a place to double to them. And then they're taking the good cars from there, leaving the others here, that's my opinion, but wanted to give you a word, uh, some of the old things that were left on the agenda to try to clear up. You are.
They also have boats on there, too. They have a couple boats.
They did, they're gonna be out.
Yes, we, we did, they did remove everything from the right away behind the building, they were holding on to put stuff back there again. It's just gonna take time in the court process, unfortunately, we are making great strides on other properties and other areas, and we're gonna have a few that just will want to grab our teeth on, but we just gotta put them in the court, and other judges will look at this one.
Okay.
But that's all I have for you guys.
Anybody have any questions on anything? Any questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I will take, entertain a motion to adjourn, Roger, you're speaking heavy. Okay.
I'll create that for Mitch.
Okay, so, I wanna give a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Great. Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
See you next month.
Next month. Superbord. I know, but we just, we're all probably, thank you. Uh, we want to, that you are being recorded. I'll be right there, Mark.
Hey, Amy, please remember to call Amy, uh, Lanny when you're done. Lanny, if you need to do it, I can plan, we're still recording.
My daughter, Sam. I'll remind you while I'm being recorded. Okay. The planning commission of Elwood, well, of the meeting of August seventh, twenty twenty-five, will now come to order. Okay, did everybody read their minutes from the last meeting, which was February sixth? Everybody look at it, and see anything wrong, or wanna party about anything? Which is basically about, um, vice president, president re-elected, and all that stuff. And all the dates for our meeting.
Mom, you're gonna have to talk louder, and I need to roll call.
Brian made a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting, and.
I accept. All right, I'm gonna second it.
You missed roll call. Deborah Sears.
Here.
Mark Crim.
Here.
Mark Worsley.
Here.
Chad Gibson.
Here.
Brian Chambers.
Here.
Jim Waters.
Here.
Kim Everson.
Here.
Bill Savage.
Here.
Jeff Grant.
Present.
Amy Neen Smith. Proceed.
Okay, now, did everybody look at their minutes from the last meeting, I'm sorry?
Yes.
And Bri- Brian made a motion to accept them.
Sorry.
And Chad seconded it. Okay, um. Okay, we're going back to the wildflower assets, LLC, seeking approval for a replat on South K Street, did everybody look at their papers? They wanna divide one parcel into two separate parcels. Do I have to open up the meeting here, or not? I've opened up the. Okay, I'll open up the public meeting.
Oh, no, it's a table, I'm, I'm sorry, Nick.
No, okay, okay, that's what I did. I was confused, okay. Okay, go ahead.
So, this, this is basically a replat of the same parcel that was addressed in the last meeting. The variances were appro- approved for the last meeting to allow this replat to happen. So, we're set up to do the replat, and, and, so that's all, that's what this is. Kathy's the surveyor, uh, action survey.
Right, right. That's why I'm here tonight, is to present this, so we can reconfigure the, uh, Lynnwood additions lots, um, two ten and two eleven. Right now, the lots are on the north south, we're gonna have it re-divided and make it east-west. We're gonna keep the same lot number, except it's gonna say, um, on the south one, it should be two eleven A, and on the north one, it'll be two ten A, so that it'll make it clear for people who are, uh, researching the four houses, and what we're doing. The north parcel will include the current house with the garage, the south will have a house on it, so that we're not gonna have two houses on one lot anymore. That helps.
So, previously, the one lot was two eleven.
Correct.
And you're gonna have two eleven A, now two ten.
Right, right, the back sign was the other lot, which was the two ten, and that's where the garage sits. If you live on your aerial, on the GIS, it'll make it clear that the.
If you live on your aerial, on the GIS, it'll make it clear that the garage on the back was sitting on that old parcel.
Actually, it was two, uh, two ten, two eleven.
Correct, and we're, we're reconfiguring them.
Does everybody know where this parcel is located, I mean, physically?
Yeah.
It used to be a ceramic shop in that back section. Wanted to propose to be lot two ten A, taking the Bernese's. The Johnson family lived there for years.
What is the adjacent property going to be used for anything? Are you going to build?
The property to rest?
Yeah.
We don't have a client on that, or these are the property, on the west. We just need two parts, we just need two lots. So the one, if you're asking what the lot is seeing right now? I don't know what you're talking about.
Well. It says that the replating of the lots does not intend to alter the siding in any way, which does not break the homes. Is everybody, is there people living in both of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought it was like a garage, okay.
There's a garage on the half side of the north property that will live with the old house.
Oh, okay. I don't see a problem with this.
Well, you said, you have a house.
Well, that was part of my, I had a little variance, because I didn't have a little time, and I asked for a re-apply, um, ordinance, because I couldn't, we can't get any more late.
Right, and the, but the ordinance is taken care of?
Yes, I, which is, which is, we did, it was.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to grant the variance for the two plots, two ten and two eleven, and one with the issue.
There's nobody here against it, is there? Pose? Okay, yeah, I can move.
Oh, we have to close the meeting first?
No.
No, they're.
Oh, we didn't have to.
I get confused from one.
I think it's almost a full name, too.
Two seconds, Mark Worsley.
Mark? Second. Did you?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, everybody?
I will need to abstain on this one, because that relives.
And then we'll need signatures as well, just as a reminder.
All right, good job, Amy, she got a signature for that sheet, and everybody has to sign.
Okay. We close the meeting, we have to wait. I said we have to close the meeting before they sign, and the decision. We're, we're cautious, because we have to say we have to work out. Okay, well, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You made a motion in that.
Ryan and Chad. No, Chad. Chad seconded. Close the meeting, adjourn. And everybody needs to just write a paper for this, we can. Thank you, guys.
Let me cover this.
I have a blank one, if you want a blank one.